Morning, everyone. Thank you so much for being here on the October 6, 2025 Special County Council Meeting. I would like to call this meeting to order at 9:30 and we will start with our land acknowledgement. We acknowledge Athabasca County is located on First Nations Treaty VI and Treaty VIII traditional territory. We respect and honor all First Nations, Métis, and Inuit peoples' connection to these lands, their history, language, and culture. And I believe we have Councillor Wallock that is joining us on Zoom. Councillor Hall will be here shortly, and I haven't heard yet from Councillor Capitanic, but I'm sure she'll be here shortly as well. She'll be here shortly as well. Thank you. Alrighty, so we're at the approval of the agenda. We have Councillor Cromwell would like to put a motion forward to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor? I see no, thank you. See no opposed. We have seven and oh, thank you. And we are looking to go into our closed session for item 3.1. And if I could, most councillor deputy read minds, councillor deputy, that's interesting. Would like to put a motion that we go into closed session, please. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That's eight and oh. Alrighty, we have come out of our closed session and we're good to go. We're live, I assume. Yes, we are. Thank you, Jordan. And we have one motion to discuss here, which would be councillor Gerlock would like for council to support the recommendations within the package as discussed. And if we're all ready for that vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And then oppose, that's eight and oh. Thank you very much. Alright, so we are now at the point of our day to have our 4.1 on our agenda, which is the 2026 budget survey results. Page three of your agenda package, and I think I'll turn this over to administration.
Through the chair to council, we should just note that there's a typo on here. It says we have eighty-six participants, but there was eighty-seven. Not it's accurate, but I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Okay, thank you. Would anybody like to begin on this particular survey discussion? I guess I will say thank you very much for putting it out. I a little bit disappointed, of course, with the lack of response. And I know that you mentioned there was eighty-seven who participated. However, most of what I noted in the survey was there was only seventy actual responses that the seventeen just skipped through it all. They might, I guess, have read the questions and chose to move on. You don't, I don't know. But when we have these conversations with the public, I do hope that I don't know if there's a way that we can improve getting the information out to ask people to try and give us their feedback, because of course it's so important that we do hear from our residents. And also for those that are, you know, seeing this particular live stream and will see the recording, I really encourage residents to come forward and have those budget conversations with their councillors, so that we're able to best represent our residents. The recommendation here, council is that council receives the results of the 2026 budget survey as information. If there isn't any further discussion, I got a nod from councillor Cromwell that we would like to put that motion on the floor. So councillor Cromwell. Just checking, yeah, councillor Wallock is fine on Zoom. The council receives the results of the 2026 budget survey as information. If we're ready for the vote, all those.
I just want to say thanks for throwing it out there and with this. I totally agree. I'd like to see more response on there, but honestly, I don't know how, I don't know how we get. I keep hearing about communication. We've got to move forward on communication and try to get people to, to to get themselves involved with what's happening with Athabasca County, and I don't really know how to move that forward. There's social media, there's, there's paper, there's, there's posters, there's everything. I really don't understand how we, how we can move it forward. So thank you for, for trying our best to get it out there and people to answer. I think, I think with an email that that our CEO gave us a while ago regarding another municipality. It wasn't a huge response there either, and it's like, but the biggest response is roads. That's infrastructure. That's huge. Thank you.
And I agree. I think that, you know, just in, of course, at this time of our term, when we spend a lot of time, more time than than the previous time we've had within this term, when it's ever an election, you vote and speak with a lot of people and I think the, the results that we did get were spot on. You know what? That's exactly what we're hearing out there as well. So it is a good representation from what I've heard as well. So thank you again for the work you've put into this. And councillor Karla?
Has a broken record. I think, I think if it went out with tax notices, you might get a response much greater than people writing out the check that's filed for at the same time.
And I think that that's part and parcel of the communication plan or quarterly newsletters. And quarterly newsletters going out mail outs. I know that's been one of the biggest thing come back to me as well is when are we going to start seeing more mail outs? And as I realize there's an expense to it, but it does seem to seem to hit home for quite a few people. So looking forward to that. Absolutely. Alright, are we ready, folks, for the vote that councillor Cromwell would like to recommend that council receives the results of the 2026 budget survey as information? All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? There you go. Seven and one. Thank you. Alright, so now we're here for that highly and.
Can I ask, and then related to this, to just tell us how they incorporated this into the budget plan? Do we do the survey? Is it in the shelf now? Or do we do the survey and do we use the results? Because, you know, there are as many people unsatisfied with our level of grading than are satisfied within a point or two. How do we use it? We all, we just accepted it. We all read it. It was interesting, but.
I, I would think that the information that came back is being taken seriously by administration and that administration is, you know, will take heed with the comments that have been made, but I will leave that to CEO back.
Yeah, Madam Chair, it'll come up in the presentation. There are some service level proposals, enhancements in certain areas, and it'll, I think it'll become painfully and expensively aware to council where those adjustments are, are proposed. So it's in the presentation.
I appreciate that. Thank you so very much. So as we are now at 4.2, the highly anticipated 2026 operating and capital budget portion of our agenda that will be for the rest of our time that we have here today. This will be our conversation. We will be starting as we see with a presentation. I just would like to say thank you right off the hop. Thank you very much for the information that you've brought forward for the first draft budget that we're seeing here. I know you've had a heck of a challenge as you're just coming aboard and we really appreciate your effort and all of the work that you've put into this. We look forward to discussing every little ounce of it. I know that there'll be a lively discussion, I'm sure that's coming, but I will turn the floor over to you for the presentation we're about to see. So thank you so very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair, councillors. So I will start this process. I'll go through the presentation. If there's any questions, as I'm going through, feel free to stop me and ask a question, or we can wait till the end of that council's discretion. So basically, this is the 2026 proposed operating capital budget that I'm going to be talking about. So I guess.
Just waiting for a few more minutes till we can bring that on the screen. Very, we're seeing it. We're good to go, I think. Alrighty, thank you so much.
Okay, so basically, we built this budget on council strategic initiatives and their plans. So the first slide, the strategic plan pillars that we built this budget on. Strengthening our economy, so keeping Athabasca County vibrant and economically sustainable is fundamental to maintaining a strong community now and well into the future. Second one was investing in. Second one, investing in infrastructure in our environment. So county assets are properly maintained and repaired or replaced if necessary. And then a community, the community that a community that cares. We continue to focus on the people who contribute to our tremendous quality of life, effective leadership and organizational excellence. Our organization has the expertise to serve the county well, and we continually, continually strive for excellence, responsive communication and strong fiscal accountability. So in this so in this budget planning process, this is just kind of a graph of progress. We reviewed our base budget versus and well, basically versus our actuals, and should mean there. We consider revenue and expenditure assumptions. And then the budget survey, so the budget survey that you just heard, that was considered. And then we adjusted budget based on trends, proposed operating and capital announcements, and then a balanced budget based on our prior, based on the council's priorities. You saw this graph probably last year, and it's very similar when I, there was no updated numbers. So it's just kind of a county snapshot of where the county is in terms of population. Average house, so average house price, total labor force, etc. So I won't get much into that one. And then our budget assumptions, budget assumptions for 2026. Property tax revenues, annual tax revenue was projected to increase by approximately 3% each year. However, collecting tax revenue from some producers in the oil sector is a challenge as a large sum continues to be unpaid. Growth. Athabasca County continues to experience growth in terms of subdivision and development applications. Grant funding. So these, these two grant funding, I'm going to mention there is mostly, while the first one is capital, so grant funding, Canada Community Billing Fund, CCBF, is expected to remain at the 2025 level at 472,666. And this is basically the federal funding, used to be called oil and gas tax, now it's Canada Community Billing Fund. So, and this is basically project based. We would put in our projects, they would approve them, capital projects, and then we will get funding like after our, after we submit our reporting. The second level of funding from the government. Now, I'd like to say, Canada Community Billing Fund, although it's federal, it's administered through the governor of Alberta. Both of these are. The second is local government fiscal framework. Capital funding is expected to decrease from 1,946,000 in 2025 to 1,786,119 in 2026. That's for capital. Our LGFF operating funding is assumed to remain at 344,000 in 2026. Just kind of a note there, the Consumer Price Index, the 2026 budget predicts sustained but moderate inflation, particularly in areas sensitive to price changes such as construction costs, fuel, food and fleet-related parts and supplies. Trade tension is expected to still be an impact in 2026. So budget assumptions continued. Salary and wages, the 2026 budget considers annual salary increments and benefits. Cost of living allowance, as per policy 4665, an annual review will be completed using a combination of factors, including the Alberta Consumer Price Index information and a recommendation to council in the annual budget process. A cost of living allowance of 2% increase is being proposed in this 2026 budget. Assessment. Over the past five years, assessment growth has shown an average annual increase of 3%. While it is too soon to confirm this year's assessment values, we expect a continued upward trend. The proposed budget anticipates a 3% increase. New council, the proposed budget bills off priorities of current council. A new council post-election may have new priorities which may affect the budget between interim budget December 2025 and final budget May 2026.
Sorry, please go ahead.
When you refer to the Consumer Price Index, does the inflationary index in the county fall anywhere close to the consumer price index? Because I would assume it would be much higher.
Correct. This one is mostly the Alberta, like the governor of Alberta, Canada.
Have you ever done a comparison between what our inflation rate is in the county compared to the Canadian price index? Because everything is so expensive, far more expensive, and there is no discretionary spending. It's all necessary spending. So I think it would be a lot higher for using the English inflation.
Thank you. We can definitely like look into that and see if there's any stats on county or rural areas, but. So continuing on the 2026 budget highlights. This budget includes paid-on call firefighters.
Director, sorry, I'm sorry, we have another question on the floor. I apologize.
Thank you. At one of our recent council meetings, I asked the question if we knew what the previous MSI contributions were in comparison to our current LGFF allocation. I see our LGFF is going down. Do we know how that compares to our previous MSI?
Oh, yes. So we do have 25 and 20, and expected in 26, but and as mentioned, the 2025 LGFF, which is previously MSI, was 1,946. It's going down to 1,786 for capital. And then the Canada Community Billing Fund, which is separate, that's remaining the same. The operations for MSI 2024. I think it shows 243, but I don't think, not sure if that was the right amount. So 2024 and 2025 MSI operating is expected to remain the same, but our LGFF, which is capital, is expected to drop just under, just under 200,000. And I'm not sure if you may be aware, but that is based on two years previous revenue. So based on the government revenue, if it fluctuates, the LGFF is going to fluctuate.
Guys, didn't mean to do that. I apologize. I just meant to turn it on. Did that answer your question? There did not need to be a ding dong in the room. I was it. Yeah. While we're just. Yeah, please follow up.
Thank you. And I know you recently sent us out a note via email of some of the questions from that were asked during the variance report. Would it be possible to, I understand you probably don't have those numbers right now, but could we get a comparison of previous year's MSI to what we're now receiving in LGFF? Just that we have that for information?
Yes. Would you like, like, or do you have a specific, like, go back five years, or are you just looking at?
That'd be fine. Yeah.
Five years? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yep. So, okay. And I guess, you know, when I just wanted to mention as well on the assessment aspect of things, when, when we're talking about the assessment growth has shown an average annual increase of 3%, and that the proposed budget anticipates a 3% increase. The revenue increase that we're seeing right now on this 2026 budget outside of percentage was 1,679,696. So I just wanted to mention that as people like to hear what the actual dollar value was rather than a percentage. So just for information out there. Yeah. Thank you.
Any more questions or before?
I think we're good to go. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. So getting into the, I guess, the meat of the budget, 2026 budget highlights. This budget contains paid-on call firefighters, a fire fleet replacement, bridge replacement, rehabilitations, park upgrades and playground rehabilitation, plow truck, rader replacement program, enterprise resource planning ERP, which is a new software, recreation plan phase one, the island lake water line. Gravel road maintenance increased to level of service, public workshop construction, and LPAC bridge. This graph just kind of shows the assessment by classification. We can see that our largest assessment is residential at 47%. Second is linear 26%. And then third is machinery equipment 17%. And we have the non-residential and farmland. So the next graph is just revenue by classification. As you can see, the residential 51% linear 24 machinery equipment, so not, the percentages are very similar. The next graph basically shows where the, what the 2026 taxes fund. So according to this, our IS expenditure, as expected, will be in infrastructure and transportation at 50%. The next IS would be administration 13%. We, pardon me, we have recreation 8%, fire protection 10%, and then our water and wastewater 5%, and then we have like agricultural services 4%, and then a couple of 1, 1 and 2%. Reserves. Reserves play a critical role in ensuring the stability and sustainability of a municipality's long-term financial plan. Reserves serve to do the following: facilitate effective asset management planning to support long-term maintenance, repair and/or retirement of infrastructure assets, ensuring the maintenance of adequate service levels. It enables the county to strategically plan for future operating and capital needs, thereby reducing reliance on long-term, long-term borrowing. Sorry. It helps stabilize tax rates. So our next slide is our, as of August 31st, is a snapshot of our operating reserves. So in operating reserves right now, we have approximately 11.3 million. Council should note that an updated reserve policy and allocation is ready for council review post-election.
Thank you very much. I have a couple of questions on this one. This particular reserves, they do not include the 2025 budget reserve transfers as of yet, 2025 budget reserves.
Yes, except for, oh, economic development.
Okay, so economic development is in here, but the rest of them are not.
No, not economic development.
Not economic, but the rest of them aren't.
Rest of America.
Okay, and public transportation. Can we get a definition of exactly what public transportation means in this particular context?
This would be our roads and roads construction. Basically, the, the way I got the reserves labeled on these two graphs, I took them directly off the financial. So if you're looking at their financial statements, it would match up with our financial statement.
Right. Just some people think we have a whole pile of trans buses that we don't have.
No, this is our, this is our roads and construction.
So that was, that's what had come back to me, but then yeah, and I appreciate the fact that the reserve policy is ready to, will be ready to come to council. Thank you very much for that. Go ahead, councillor.
Yeah, getting back to pages 44 and 43 and 44. Revenue by classification. According, by assessment classification, 47% residential. And if you combine linear and machinery and equipment, it's 43. Oh, and yet when you look at the revenue, the ones that bought four point some mills, the other ones that have 15 or 16. So the linear and machinery and equipment should be well in excess of residential.
So these numbers are based on last year's with our 2025. So based on 2024 numbers with our 2025 assessment, which will be last year's assessment, there is no new assessment numbers. So now whether or not those numbers are going to go up, this would have been based on our initial assessment from last year.
Madam Chair, if you look, there's somehow the colors got mismatched on this graph. So so we'll clarify that. I think you're on to something that the non-res revenue is, should be higher. So we will clarify that, update this graph and send it out to council.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Councillor Hall, did you? Okay, same thing. So we're all, oh, please go ahead.
So sorry, I thought I pushed it. So there's a comment here that you just, you know, you just made council should note that an updated reserve policy is ready for council review post-election. I'm going to say that I do have kind of a beef with us kicking everything post-election. We are the council of the county today. If the reserve policy is ready, why is it not ready to be put in front of the experienced councillors? Sorry, because if we want to take that view, maybe we should just adjourn the meeting and go home and leave this all for somebody else.
I disagree. I think it's extremely.
I'm sorry, I asked administration a question about why we're not seeing the reserve policy in front of our.
I appreciate that, but I disagree that we should kick the can, or that we should adjourn the meeting is what I'm trying to say.
I disagree too, but I mean, I don't know why we're not seeing it here. That's what I'd like to know.
Thank you.
We're happy to do whatever council would like.
Thank you. And so are we understanding then that the policy is ready and has not yet come to council for?
It hasn't come at all, even for initial consideration.
Absolutely. So without seeing that and without that going through council, it would be pretty difficult to have that here today. But we can definitely, I'm looking forward to seeing that policy when it is ready to come to council and it is on the next agenda, I'm hoping. And if it's not, well, that's okay too. It is coming and I'm thankful for that.
So the next slide is on our capital reserves and then total reserves as of August 31st. So you can see there for capital, we are, we're about just under 10 million at 9.9 million. So then our total reserves, capital and operating is 21.2250, 21,250. So then our total reserves, capital and operating is twenty-one point two, two fifty, twenty-one million, two hundred and fifty thousand. And we are expecting from this budget a transfer of approximately twenty-seven thousand. So at the, at the end, it would be twenty-one million, two hundred and seventy-seven thousand. So this budget includes twenty twenty-five carryover. So projects that we had approved in twenty twenty-five, which will be carried over to twenty twenty, or requested to be carried over for twenty twenty-six. Infrastructure services, the first one would be the island lake water, water line, fifteen million, six hundred thousand. Infrastructure services, LPAC bridge, one point eight million. Fire protection, fleet replacement, six hundred and ninety thousand. Community and protective services, Boyle IDP, fifty thousand. Infrastructure services, security camera and yard lighting, thirty-six thousand. And still under infrastructure services, laser level attachment transit for excavator, ninety-five hundred.
And just if I may, with regards to the LPAC bridge, so as we're going through the budget, the funding that we have received with regards to help with regards to that bridge, that's included in our budget, correct?
Correct.
Thank you very much.
So getting into our twenty twenty-six proposed capital projects. And for those twenty-five projects carried over, you will see these also in twenty-six, so there's no I guess, no confusion there, they're in there. So infrastructure services, island lake wa, island lake water line, fifteen million, six hundred. We have the infrastructure services, LPAC bridge, one point eight million. Fire protection, fleet replacement, six hundred and ninety. And actually, that number that number that number is actually changed, it's just under nine hundred thousand. It was a it showed six, six ninety, but there was actually a payment which started in twenty. When we bought the piece of equipment, we had to make the final payment. So our budget is actually nine hundred and forty-five. So this number should actually read nine hundred and forty-five, not six ninety. Sorry, my apologies, but. Number.
Thank you.
So then we have the community and productive services, Boyle IDP, five, fifty thousand. Infrastructure services, so these are basically the twenty-five carried to twenty-six. Infrastructure services, security camera and yard lighting, thirty-six thousand. The laser level attachment transit to excavator, ninety-five hundred. Then we have under administration, enterprise resource planning ERP software, a new software system, five hundred thousand. And then under infrastructure services, billing maintenance based upon billing conditional assessment, five hundred thousand, and some of the projects that that would cover would be USP upgrade, administration east trough system, administration billing HVAC study, and council chambers windows. So basically, this is a five hundred, oh, sorry.
Sorry, thank you. If we may flip the slide once too, please. And Counselor Anderson has a question.
Thank you. The enterprise resource planning software, can you explain a little bit about what, what that software is, what it's used for, that kind of thing?
Yes, thank you for the question. So currently, our software, our financial software is Microsoft Dynamics. Some people know it as Great Plains or Diamond. So that software is end of use, end of useful life coming in twenty twenty-eight. They say it could be supported in twenty-eight, but definitely after twenty-nine, this software will no longer be supported. So talking to consultants and everything else with a lot of municipalities on this software, it could take anywhere from six months, twelve months to twenty-four months to get, to get a RFP, get a software, new software provider and get the system implemented. So we're, we're going in twenty twenty-six, so to get to meet the deadline to have a software in place by twenty twenty-eight, we need to start our process probably in twenty-six to get our RFP out, to choose a vendor and then the implementation. So after, after we get our process RFP, et cetera, four to six months, then when we choose a vendor, it could take anywhere from twelve to eighteen months for implementation of that new software and to get us up, up online running before our current software is no longer supported.
Awesome. Thank you. And I think you mentioned that as well in one of your, your budget change request forms that, that was described in here as well. So thank you. So for more information in that.
Yeah, there is a case study.
Right, to have a look at that. So, yeah, and I do encourage the public to please review these documents because they're extremely important. So thank you.
Under building maintenance, can we get a breakdown for each of the four bullet points? For your estimate there for five hundred thousand? The current twenty twenty-six is not, don't add to five hundred thousand, but I think in the twenty twenty-five budget, we have five hundred thousand that was approved on an ongoing basis to cover off like various various maintenance and bill, issues related to the billing BCA study. So these are just some of the projects that will be covered in twenty twenty-six that I've listed it under the BCA. But we can get the specific cost for these four and send it, send it out to council. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to welcome, just so you know, we are on page fifty-one of the agenda. Okay, thank you. Please go ahead.
So the next project is infrastructure services, shoulder poles, budgeted four hundred and fifty thousand. Or then we have fire protection, highway sixty-three rescue base teen center renovation, two hundred and twenty-five thousand. Infrastructure services, public works yard and facilities, fifteen million. We have infrastructure services, bridge replacement, one point nine five million. This is in addition to the LPAC bridge, separate, like separate from the LPAC bridge. We have infrastructure services, asphalt overlay annual program, one point five two six million. Infrastructure services, greater replacement program, one point five million. Infrastructure services, a plow truck, three hundred and fifty thousand. Infrastructure services, skid steer, two hundred and thirty-five thousand. Infrastructure services, lift station electrical upgrade, two hundred thousand. And a lot of these numbers that you're seeing, there is business cases in the detail of the dockness, which will give you more, like a little bit more detail on each of the items.
So if we have any questions to ask regarding these capital projects, is it better to ask them as they come up later on in the budget or ask them now, or I don't, I don't know, like?
Well, I think if we can, we'll go through every department and then if that works, and then we can, if that's okay.
Yeah, yeah, I guess that's counsel's discretion.
Okay, that works. So great. Thank you.
So the next slide, continuing on, infrastructure services, grassland reservoir electrical upgrade, two hundred thousand. Infrastructure services, Willow Point access, hundred and eighty-five thousand. Infrastructure services, houses, hundred and sixty thousand. Infrastructure services, recreation plan phase one, one hundred thousand. Infrastructure services, hydrant installations, fifty thousand. Infrastructure services, highway signage, forty thousand. Infrastructure services, playgrounds, twenty thousand. Infrastructure services, light equipment, more, eight thousand. So the next slide talks about our twenty twenty-six proposed operating changes. For administration, we are deferring to digitalization project to twenty twenty-seven is basically digital records, hundred and thirty-two thousand. So that's deferred. And also administration, HR and safety and GIS was moved to a separate cost center. So no net budget impact, four hundred and ten thousand was moved out of administration to separate cost centers, but there's no net impact on the budget. We did the same for, under administration, we did the same for facility costs, was moved to the facilities cost center, fifty-six thousand, there's no net impact on the budget, it's just a movement of the dollars. Under community, community transportation, community transportation includes a full-time anti-bus driver and transfer administrator, administration position of sixty-four, sixty-four thousand total. So basically, the administrative position was under a different cost center, so it's just transferred under community transportation. Economic development, net increase due to funding of a lobbyist previously funded by reserves, hundred and five thousand. Fire protection increase in, in paid-on call allocations, seasonal fire technician, and decreased revenue offset by various reductions in expenses, three hundred and eighty-two thousand. In fire protection, increase in transfer to reserve capital, two hundred and fifty thousand. A decrease in emergency management due to end-of-grant funding of fifty thousand. And infrastructure services, increase in agriculture services for new position and transfer of large-scale mowing program. Mowing program reduced in road construction. So the mowing program was just a movement from roads construction to agriculture services. And the case study for the position that's referred to here is in the detail, five hundred and five thousand. And then in infrastructure services, this is just a overall decrease in common services of twenty-five thousand. The items I listed offset and are roughly twenty-five thousand, so decrease in feasibility studies, decrease in pit management activities, decrease in repairs and maintenance, increase in vehicle and equipment rentals, increase in maintenance supplies, and offset by basically lower twenty twenty-six revenue. Infrastructure services, increase in recreation mainly due to increase in multiplex costs and recreation plan. Four hundred and sixty thousand. In, infrastructure services, increase in road construction includes bridge, bridge repair move to operations, increased dust control and one million net revenue decrease for gross recovery, one point two million. Infrastructure services, increase in water services mainly due to three dollar reduction in water rate, hundred and thirty thousand. Infrastructure services, increase in gravel road maintenance, including increasing gravel and change in gravel specification, five hundred and eighty-nine thousand. Next slide, proposed new positions. So this budget includes two proposed new positions, infrastructure services, agriculture assistant field man, hundred and ten thousand, and fire protection, regional fire smart coordinator, two-year term. Salary and advertising is funded by grant, but the remaining forty-eight thousand is what's requested in this budget.
Awesome. Thank you very much. This is an opportunity for questions, folks, if anybody has anything that they would like to raise for clarity or those things, we'll wait, we'll go through the main, we'll go through the main. Okay, oh, actually, Councilor Hall has a question.
You had Willow Point access. I feel like that's the first we've heard of that. Can you tell us what that is on page fifty-three?
Let's see, subdivision just south of town. It's a multi-lot subdivision just south of town that has some new development permits been issued. There hasn't been any construction in there for quite some time, but when we went out to inspect it, there is basically no roads or ditches or approaches. So there's now a development in there and from an infrastructure perspective, we need to ensure that there's some drainage and that it goes to where the easements are and that's what it is.
Is that not a developer responsibility and how did this end up in our hands? Like, how do we take that over from the developer?
I would have been approved years ago. It's, it's not a new subdivision, so it's one that.
Thank you. Does that answer your question? Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you. Oh, there's a hand up there, tiny little hand up on the screen there, Councilor Wallach.
Thanks. When we're looking at the highway sixty-three and teen center, we know those are in pretty bad repairs. Is it worth us fixing it or do we just get a new facility? Or has that been looked at?
So the current highway sixty-three base is crown-owned and we, we've been maintaining it and spending a lot of money on maintenance and it continues to be a money pit. And so this teen center property that the county owns in Water River, we looked at what renovations would cost and as well build a garage that could house the, the vehicles. And so we wanted to propose that to council as a solution instead of continuing to spend money on a, on a facility that is not owned by us.
Great, thank you.
Awesome. Go ahead, Councilor Pramo.
Thank you very much. Page number fifty-two and page number fifty-three. Lift station and grassland reservoir electrical upgrades both for two hundred thousand. Which is the lift station and are these actually owned by the county?
At the moment, there's, I guess, some discussions on who owns what in the lift station that we are sorting out with the commission. But it's been determined that this work needed to be done. And so we felt that we would move forward with it and figure out the, I guess, costs afterwards with, with commission.
Yeah, Madam Chair, just to go further on that, wherever it says lift station, that refers to sanitary sewer. Sanitary sewer is hundred percent county. There's no discussion with anyone else about whether or not they operated or us. We own those. The electrical upgrade, I think that's a bit of a, I think a bit of a discussion point. But we also have some grant applications that we are making for these two. And so I think that's reflected. We've received positive feedback from the province that most of the things that Jackson is proposing, we'll get some grant money. So even if it was then found to be water commission, if the province is going to help us fund it, we should, we should do it even if it goes over to the water commission. So we feel good about the grant application for some of these things, but back to the original thing, wherever it says lift station, that refers to sanitary.
Okay, thank you very much. Page fifty-five. An increase in ag services for a new position, is that not the same as new ag fieldment on page fifty-seven, or are we looking at two positions under ag, not one?
Same. Madam Chair, it's one position, not two.
Okay, so we have it on two line items, one position. The way I'm reading it. Okay, thank you.
Should it be field person?
That is all for now.
Just saying, field person. I'll throw that in there. Anybody else? Okay, I think if we're done with the questions, I think, I think everything I was asking has been already on the table, so I think we are at the stage, folks. We can break for lunch. I'm sure that it's been a busy morning already. Would folks like to, how much time would you like for lunch? Twenty-five minutes? Is that satisfactory? All right. So I think that we will do that and come back at just before twelve thirty. Twelve oh two. Yeah, just before twelve thirty, we'll come back. All right, folks. Thank you so very much. All right, folks, thank you so very much.
Thank you. I believe we're live now and we will carry on. We're live now. Thank you. We're resuming our budget meeting. Our budget discussions, pardon me, at our special council meeting and we are currently at 4.2, we're on page 59 of our agenda, the draft budget 2026-2030 operating and capital plan. As you will see on page 60, you have your table of contents so that we're able to find things quite easily and I really appreciate that. That's fantastic. And I think the order we'll work in is we'll just go by department. So that everybody can, instead of one person at a time going through the whole budget, we'll start with the the budget summary that we have here on page 61. And is there any thing that administration would like to weigh in on before we go to each council member to have questions and whatnot? You're okay? Administration is good to go. All right. So if we'd like to begin, who would like to start on the summary? Does anybody have any concerns they'd like to bring forward? Okay, then we will quickly move over. And we are now going to go to, this is still the summary, we go administrative services, please. Page 62. Any input here? Hey, well, I will start then, I guess. I will, as we've had this conversation a few times, I will put the plug out there as well for the community aggregate payment levy. Curious to know what the administrative costs are to administrate this particular program, especially if we have to start doing audits for those who participate in it. That's, I know, I know, it's kind of a, and even if we can't have an answer to that today, it would be something that I would definitely be interested in hearing about. Just because when we're looking at this particular proposed revenue, I know we had the financial variance report come out to say that we are above the 10,000 for the 2025 or just over 14,000 in revenue. However, I would like to know what it costs to administer it if we have to go out and start doing audits for those who participate in it, is this amount really worthy for revenue if it's going to cost more to operate it?
Yep, we're happy to provide you what we think the cost is to administer that. Unfortunately, none of us were here when council brought that in. Was council shown a business plan or anything before you brought it in? Like some places do a complete review of what it would bring in and and the early years really, you don't make much and then it builds over time. So council was never, never had that discussion?
The conversation that was that exactly what are we expecting for revenue? And it was, I don't know until we know. And so it's always been a concern because of course with when you're going to auditing businesses and whatnot for these to participate in these programs, those costs drive up pretty quickly. So that's why I was, I am concerned that it, we're not having enough revenue to offset the the cost to administrate. So that's one thing that I was concerned about there. I really liked seeing on page six of the of the budget, but it's page 64 of our agenda, the communication flyer mailouts. Just wanted to point that out. That's I'm going to, and rarely needed addition and enhancement to our communication. And I think that the residents will be extremely appreciative of that. There's a few others. Postage really increased, but again, that's again due to the mailouts, right? Professional consulting and legal dropped immensely. Is that just due to current actuals that we are seeing now? So this is on page 62 and item line item 2234.
Madam Chair, one area. Professional, professional services, legal services. One area that was the portion of GIS that got moved from this cost center. So you, so you would see a decline because of that. So you will see on their GIS. A portion of that would be in there.
Okay, fantastic. Is that the same with the other professional fees? A couple lines down dropping to 75,000 line 2246.
Madam Chair, I think that was previously we had a financial consultant. So probably won't be needing the services in the future.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. The one item as well here, the transfer to reserves, 1,810,000. And I believe that's due to interest that we anticipate earning. So I would like to mention maybe the consideration as we're going through the budget today that instead of putting that into general that we look at splitting maybe some of that out possibly. And I'm just gonna throw some numbers out there just for conversation sake, but possibly 500,000 to fire services, 500,000 to the public works building, you know, 500,000 to boat launches. I'm just trying to figure out if they're, instead of putting that into the general reserves, if we can actually start utilizing those funds in some of the other areas where we're planning on putting reserves in already to try and drop some of that in in that particular budget. So it's just for a consideration, conversation to have. Unless administration feels that the general reserves is the absolute answer for where this interest revenue should come from.
Well, Madam Chair, I think we indicated we're going to bring a reserve policy and allocation to you very soon. So you can have that discussion at that point. I mean, it's, it's a placeholder here. Where it ends up is entirely up to council.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. And other expenses I see dropped as well. It would be page four of your budget, 2990. Other expenses dropped from 57.5 to 1,000. And just was kind of curious about that.
Madam Chair, that's the election expenses. So we budgeted for the 2025, every four years you'll see a incline.
Awesome. So we'll see that again in four years, like you say. Okay, perfect. Thank you so very much. Does anybody else have any? Think, go ahead, please, Councilor Gerlach, and then Councilor Anderson.
Sorry, question I probably should ask earlier. Anticipating 3% increase in revenue from taxation.
In the particular line item on the summary, we have 3% from growth and then we, we put in an additional 2% increase. So the revenue there shows 5%, 3% anticipated from growth. And there is a, I guess, a proposed suggested 2% tax increase.
As well as
I'm sorry, Councilor Gerlach, would you be willing to speak into your mic? Because I can't hear you across the table.
I would be more than willing to. I just said that the farmland taxes certainly need some investigation. They are extremely low as well as our linear and chain equipment. We're substantially below our neighboring jurisdictions.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything that they would like to discuss under administrative services? Okay, I've just got a couple more. Oh, pardon me. I'm so sorry. Yes, Councilor Anderson. Oh, my goodness. I apologize.
Thank you. Under line item 1560 facility rentals, just seeing that the old Collington Fire Hall rental has gone up from 6,000 to 8,000 dollars. I'm wondering if we've increased the rental fee for that facility? Was a new agreement established or?
I'm sorry, what line item? 1560?
So it's 1560, the facility rentals for the old Collington Fire Hall rental goes from 6,000 to 8,000 dollars.
Madam Chair, we'll look into that one and bring it back. We'll make sure the next draft. Not exactly sure why the change.
Thank you. Yeah, I was just wondering if we've, if it's now we have an agreement in place where maybe it was a handshake deal before we've
I'm aware of no changes since the last discussion about six weeks ago.
Thank you. In addition, under 2920 bad debt and uncollectible, we have 11,000 annually for abandoned gas stations, uncollectible taxes, and 100,000 for uncollectible oil and gas taxes. I'm just wondering, do those accurately reflect what we had this year? Outstanding? Or just, just for information purposes, like that's a, that's a high number that I think we should be drawing more attention to.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, we'll get the actuals to council.
Okay, appreciate that. Thank you. I do have a couple more, just, okay. Just wanted to clarify on page nine of the budget, page 67 of our package. Code 2276 property taxes paid. I'm assuming that's the Collington levy on the old fire hall. I don't, unless we, is that transitional house? Just curious how, yeah.
Madam Chair, we'll find out what the 250 dollars is and we'll report back.
Yeah, I suspect that that's what that's for was the the Collington levy. The transitional house costs, are we breaking even there? Or is that in a different department?
Madam Chair, I think there's a modest surplus.
Okay, that's great. That's good news. And I also, 2511 office supplies, the ergonomics. I'll just put a plug in for the chairs in the council chambers. I noticed that most of the chairs in the office were done, that council chambers, we sit in these chairs for a very long time. So just, I'll put that plug out there. Oh, the item under rec grants on page 10 of your budget, page 68, and it mentions trails allocation, 5,000, third man cost 5,000 for grant. And I'm wondering if there's, you know, space around the table for, there's some weed control that's required in a heavily tanzied area on the undeveloped road allowance 223, which is part of the trail. The trail operator do not feel they are responsible for weed control on the undeveloped road allowance. So it's just a an item that has been brought to our attention as we've been going and talking to residents about the trail as well as for residents in the area, their concern of that tanzing in the, in, on the municipal road allowance. And as, as we mentioned already, the accounts for the abandoned gas stations, the uncollectible taxes. We were discussing the amounts under $10 at one of our previous meetings, that there are several accounts that are under $10. Will that be something that we're able to write off this for this budget as well? Yes. Okay. Thank you. And I believe that's the majority of items that I had that. Oh, that was the other one, actually. Page 12 of the budget, page 70 of our agenda package, it mentions Squarespace for tree sale.
That's the egg services line.
Oh, thank you. Sorry. Yeah, appreciate it. Yep, ready to go. All right. So if we're all done then with the administrative services, you go ahead, please, Councilor Hall.
So on the rec grants, I'm just wondering why we're still allocating $15,000 in that when we know that wondering if a teen center's been closed for a considerable period of time? That should be down to 10. And I don't remember if we ever did get the update on whether we actually paid it out after they were closed and whether we recovered those funds.
Thank you. We'll follow up on that one.
Anybody else on these ones? Okay, we're good to go. All right. Next item up is on page 69, Egg Services Department. Page 11 of the budget, who would like to begin? Go ahead, please, Councilor Thompson.
I'm just curious on line 221 with advertising and if that is an adequate amount or if there's a need to be an increase when I go back on the survey. I just kind of questioned if perhaps they may need a little bit more help with the advertising and stuff, just so don't knows become a little bit larger informed.
My understanding is Madam Chair is all the ones that needed adjustment were adjusted to meet the actual. And the one big ask is the Assistant Egg Field Person. And the one big ask is the Assistant Egg Field Person. And the other one is just an adjustment. We've moved the large mower costs from road construction into this one. So it looks like it's an increase, but it's just a decrease in another budget. So the one big ask is really the Assistant Egg Field, really.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything for these? Okay, I think for me on this one that highlights the most is the drainage. I know it was mentioned that drainage was going to be something that was looked at. But I didn't see much of an increase to the budget unless it goes in a different category.
Madam Chair, we talked about that and it's on our list of potential action items for 26, which you will get to see. We need to, council needs to establish what our level of service is for the drainages before we assign the budget. We don't have one. So the budget would follow out of what level of service are we trying to hit? So we've got a number in mind. We've seen it. But we need to make sure we understand what council wants for level of service before we slide in a number. So it's the argument of this level of service follow budget or should budget follow level of service?
Right.
We've proposed, we need level service defined before we establish budget.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Because yes, it is mentioned in the budget change request form that the department is looking to enhance its level of service. So I appreciate that. And look forward to seeing that those numbers may be because drainage is becoming a huge concern for our residents and our egg, our farmers and producers. Um, does anybody go ahead, please, Councilor Gerlach?
Just a quick question on that egg, the support, export or deputy egg director. Grounds frozen half the year, ground's not frozen the other half of the year. What does a person do when the ground is frozen?
So there is a business case attached that outlines the programs and the planning that is associated with those programs. The vast majority of that planning would be undertaken in the winter months to get everything in place for that. As well as, you know, I think we've heard that council would like to see additional communication with the residents on how we're gonna roll things out. Instead of just showing up, maybe we're gonna start communicating with people that were coming and maybe educate people on some of the inspections and so on. So that's what they would do during the winter is a lot of the planning and getting the program information ready at that point, as well as there's a fair amount of training in the winter that takes place as well.
Thank you very much. Are we good to go, folks? Go ahead, Councilor Hall.
I understood we had a, I can't remember the policy number, but I'm sure I've read a policy where we provide some partial payment for fence line brushing and clearing. And are we, is that in the egg services budget or is that somewhere else, a grant or rebate program? And I also had the impression that might have been something that the ASP was talking about too. Where we provide some funding to help landowners with the clearing. If they do the work, we provide a bit of funding to really stretch the dollars further for roadside brushing.
Yeah. Have to go back and look at the policy. I'm not sure if that is still the current policy. I know when I read it this summer, I that didn't jump out at me when I was looking at the fence line policy for how we approve it for landowners. So I will look at, see if I can find the policy that says that we kosher.
Thank you. I see your hand up, Councilor Wallock. Please go ahead.
Thanks. Just some follow up to that. In August, I believe of 2024, the ASB board passed a motion to go to council for that. So it still has not come to council for that brushing incentive.
Okay, thank you. I'm assuming that will be coming to council later eventually, if it's on an action list, right? Assuming. Okay. The I do have a question on the pocket gofer program. That is concentrated in one area, if I'm not mistaken, or is it in countywide? Is it one area of concentration on that? Thank you.
It's concentrated with the pocket gofers.
Yeah.
Which is in Division one.
Right. So, yeah, I just was wondering. I guess I'm just curious about more about that, but we'll learn about it, Nate, at the egg services meeting. So thank you. Yeah. Does anybody else have anything for agricultural services? Okay, we will move on to page 75 of our agenda package, page 17 of the budget, the draft budget, the airport. Anybody like to have any conversation here? Rubber, hold your peace.
So we have landing fees listed and I'm wondering how those are collected then when we start talking about, you know, administrative time wasting to collect $1,500. How much time do we spend doing that? Is that? Is it worth collecting for $1,500? Is it worth collecting?
Sorry, which line was that, Councilor?
Apologies, I didn't say it was 1410.
Okay, we can look into what that timing or administration costs are for that.
Thank you. Anyone else? I noticed contracted services line item or code 2250 has increased from 18.5 to 62,000. And does that mean they just do to the runway maintenance for including the crack ceiling?
Madam Chair, it's completely associated with the crack ceiling of the right airstrip.
And the runway painting. So, okay. And is that cyclical type thing every two years, every three years? Depending on, I guess, this, how it holds up?
Yeah, well, my recommendation would be crack ceiling every year.
Okay, awesome. Preventative maintenance. It's good. Anybody else have anything to bring forward on these? Okay, we're moving to the next item, which is cemeteries, page 78 of your agenda package. Anybody like to begin on this one? I know we discussed at one of our last meetings with regards to the policy for our grants that we're offering that cemeteries may have an increase in those particular grants, but I guess that still needs to come back to council for finalization. Is there any further? No one has anything. Okay, we're moving on. Page 22 of yours, we'll go ahead, please.
On the cemetery one, would there be value in us clarifying, like, I think there's a real difference between us maintaining our own cemeteries and just being able to say? I don't think it's a legitimate way to post the financial expense when we just call it maintenance and mowing. And we've included, you know, 25 cemeteries that we don't own in that, like, we should be identifying that as a community donation or something else because we're not maintaining our own stuff. That's a, that's a donation to other community groups. And at least as we talk about what we do in the community, there's a way to say to say like, here's something we provide for the community as a value add that to me is distinctly different from maintaining something we.
Madam Chair, we can, we can certainly break out those ones that are seen as a donation versus the ones where we're the.
And I mean, if you also were to think that it was too much work, then I guess it's like.
No, I mean, we're tracking that anyways to understand what the cost of each business unit. So we're starting to track that.
Thanks.
All right. Ready to move on? Okay, the next item is page 80 of your agenda package, page 22 of the draft budget, common services. Who would like to begin? Want to go ahead? Sure.
Because no one else is, I'll jump on 2250, page 24 or 82. Agenda, under gravel pit expenses, gravel pit reclamation, various lease sites, pits. Quint stockpile. Like, is that actually what we're doing? Or are we, are we? Naming them, I guess, is what I'm looking at. Are we doing any reclamation in these sites?
These heights. Yes, right. That is the pit. That's the one where the mag is.
Yeah.
Correct. Yeah. Yeah. So that is the one that we're proposing to do some reclamation on and get that wrapped up.
We do still have gravel in there, right?
Not that I'm aware of.
Might want to check that out. That the biggest thing is in that right where the old barnyard was, we're all on pipe and all the bridge timbers and all that stuff. I remember right, we had about 30,000 yards sitting there that could be crushed.
Okay. And the other story to the chair. The other question.
Your quint stockpile.
Which one?
Quint stockpile. It's got, it's just a, it's worded here and it's like, okay.
I believe that is the one that they, it's an old stockpile site that we're gonna do internally.
Oh, okay. And then. Not down there, grassland stockpile site. Need to ask what that's about.
Okay, so you're gonna probably see two new ones come up from infrastructure. We've kind of gone through and created an area map to try and reduce our costs of hauling. And we've identified two locations that we feel would be beneficial for stockpile sites, which would allow us to stay within nothing more than a 20-mile haul if we have those two sites. One is grassland. So we've inquired to the province to see if there's an option for us to go into a site just east of grassland and straight south on a crown quarter that has a cleared area. And the other one is out by island lake at the lagoon site where we will likely be stripping there this fall trying to create a stockpile location there.
Okay, that'll be looked environmentally and all that stuff, right, through the on that side of grassland.
Yes.
Okay. Gravel pit management, 219,000, what, 219,000, what goes it? To save was into that.
Through the chair, the vast majority of that would be pit operation plans, permits associated with all the pits, as well as some of the environmental studies that are required.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on this particular topic? I do have a few questions. Nobody else does? Okay. The 20 engineering, the 2236 code for miscellaneous bridge and road construction if required and new shop design phase. There is $0 listed there. Just curious.
Madam Chair, I think those costs are all included as capital projects this year. So capital. So it makes those numbers a little bigger.
Perfect. Appreciate that. Thank you. Um, the same page, 24 of the budget, 82 of our package, 2250 contracted services. And this is just for clarity purposes, the public works yard monitoring and remediation for hydrocarbon removal. Is that just ongoing forever?
So this was one that has created a red flag for us and we had looked at increasing the budget significantly to identify the con, the concentration area of the contamination, which maybe it makes more sense to identify that, remediate it, and then we can get away from this testing. The short answer right now is until that is remediated and reclaimed. Yes, it's every year forever.
So yeah, I hope remediation is coming to the table because yeah, that would be, yeah, again.
So we are, the initial draft actually showed us ramping up that engineering to delineate it and give us a plan. I'm gonna say that was close to 400,000.
That was an additional 250.
Yeah, so to just to get us a plan and then it would be up to us what we do with it, dig it out, of course, but apparently we have trucks and hose. So I mean, we could do it, but it's a big project. I think that's gotta come back a bit more. We'd like to take it on. We might even as we get closer, whether or not we're doing the shop or not, it makes sense maybe to add it all together and clean up that yard. So it's a big, it's a big job. So until we do, yes, the annual testing costs stay there and and that's why the initial draft that public work showed. They said, why do we pay this every year? Why don't we bite it off and clean it up? And so we could, we could absolutely bring it back. We just, we're trying to find ways to drop a couple things and that one got dropped.
And that one, yeah, no, it makes sense. I'm just glad that the discussion is happening for sure. We lost counsel. Well, okay, the last item, or well, maybe not the last one, but one of them I also noticed on page 83 of our package, 25 of the drop budget, 2252 code waste pickup. There is, is how is that being handled? Since there's nothing proposed for a cost there.
True to what? So it's just in another line item.
In another line item? Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. Rental, rental equipment, the small packers. Which one went up there? The vehicle rent for the tandem truck. Is this something as well? Is it, we rent because it's for a short season? And so it doesn't make sense to own?
Yeah, when we've evaluated the cost of ownership versus rental for that piece of equipment, it makes more sense for us financially to rent it.
Perfect.
Which also goes for the, the whole that we have as well.
I'm just going back, I, sorry, page 81, I had, I knew I had a question. I thought I asked it, but the code 1560 for facility rentals, rental of half the West Wing shop to the town. Does that include utilities or do they pay utilities?
Ooh.
Good question. I'm gonna have to look into that. I don't know the answer to that.
Madam Chair, with my previous employment with Town, I know that we do get an invoice after usually in March or April for I think electricity and fuel gap, the gap, the power and gas.
Okay, that's wonderful because I had the question, of course, is who's paying to charge the electric vehicle that people don't find this a popular item? Some people don't find it as a popular item. And I think that's all I have for now. Anybody else? Go ahead, please.
I got one more. No, we're talking about equipment rental, equipment rental of a dozer. Are we renting a dozer every year to? To do what?
That's really, sorry, through the chair. It's really associated with. It's really associated with fire. We rent the dozers when we need to help out with the fire stuff.
Do we rent it all like all summer or is it just, no, just rented real quick and gotten rid of real quick?
And when we no longer need it for, whether ours is on the fire or that one. If what I, because I inquired as to that and I don't think we hired or got one this year, but when required, it's there.
Okay, okay, thanks.
By please counsel.
I looking on page 84, underline 2760 part A. I, I feel like council has provided direct direction to annually contribute a bit of money to a snow clearing reserve. And seeing, you know, that here with no numbers next to it unless the lines aren't working for me. It also has made me look back at the reserves in the previous part of the agenda and I don't see that we've gotten money identified in there as a snow clearing. Could be an operating reserve, I think, and I don't.
There, I didn't see it.
Please go ahead.
Just through the chair, there, there is no, it's a zero. It was in there from previous, but it's zero funded, there's no reserve. So there's no transfer in this budget associated with.
I, I have the memory that council had asked to set aside some money every year into a snow clearing reserve. And we should be building it up, but did we not do that?
I think if I remember correctly, we decided last budget that we would stop. And so that's, that's what happened there that we built that, I think there's 30,000 in there now, if I'm not mistaken, and that council decided that that was to stop doing that.
Madam Chair, I know that we're in the draft reserve policy that you haven't seen yet. The snow clearing shows up as I think it's lumped in together with some other things, kind of a, but you'll see it. You'll see it, council will see it. We've reallocated a lot of the current reserves, which we're not sure why they were established, but snow clearing will have a reserve.
Thank you.
We did make our very first winter, we did have a reserve for another hard winter because of how everything was, so there should be money put away in a specific reserve for that. And you're absolutely bang on correct or not.
Okay. Alrighty, anybody else for last chance on common services? Well, we will have another chance November 13th is our next.
So we should go through the chair, we should go look for a motion and to add that back in.
Yeah, either that or we'll deal with that through the reserve policy review. Either way, it'll get done.
Right, I think we were capping it, what we had in there and then we weren't going to continue contributing, but.
Yeah, I thought we took that out of there just due to the fact that it's under an emergency sort of. It could go underneath operating, honestly, like if we need to hire a grader to go out there and remove a little bit of snow, it's an emergency fund. It's under operate.
Alrighty, thank you. Are we ready to move on, folks? Okay. Community transportation is next, page 27 of your draft.
Can I just jump us back?
Yeah.
On the expense side, we've got line 20, 2534 sand and gravel. And I know it's only 14,000, but there's some town and some summer villages. And I just can just help us out, what clarify.
Most of that would be it, sorry, through the chair. Most of that would be associated with plowing and sanding that we do and then we build them.
Okay, so then it's in the.
It would be offset with. So that's shows the expense, the revenue would come back.
Okay.
Are we ready now? Hey, community transportation, page 27 of your budget, page 85 of our package. Is there any conversation here? I think more just for information for for councils information. The transfer to reserves, it has a in parentheses county only. It's just due to the town and the village who will establish their contributions are going to be hanging on to their contributions. So it doesn't, it's not included in our budget because of that.
Didn't we agree that that had to come to to us as part of the operating cost?
Right, so we had a look at the budget last week with the, with the in the transportation committee and they are been asked to bring forward what their contributions are when they have their budget discussion. And I believe we'll have, again, we'll have further conversation.
So I'm again going to speak against that. As we depreciate vehicles through use, we should be setting aside the money all the way along as we're using them. So that when we start off with a brand new vehicle and three partners wear it out, by the time it's worn out, our reserve fund is fully funded and we don't have to go back to the partners and hope they might decide to cough up their share. But the depreciation is something that's happening while they're using it and it should come back into our hands on on a consistent basis. So I, I I think it's a mistake from a financial planning standpoint to not collect that as we, as we wear out those, those units.
Thank you. Is there any other comments, concerns, questions on community transportation? We're good to go. All right. We are moving to page 30, sorry.
So we're still a bit unclear. Didn't the agreements we signed require that to come in?
I would have to look at the agreement. I don't have it in front of me to be able to answer that in a factual way.
I recall that there was discussion about that and because of the I know issues isn't the right word, but issues always getting that payment, that was part of our agreement. And I think that included community transportation. I, I am remembering much conversation about that.
I remember some conversation. I don't remember the result.
I, I believe it was in in the motion or in the agreement that the county will get and hold that money and have it exactly that ongoing and regular for that purpose. I'm very certain about that.
I will definitely have to review the agreement and have that conversation for sure.
And then while we're talking about it, the idea of going to a full-time transportation driver. How is the cost splitting on that going to go between town, the village, the county? Or are we going to be funding that full-time driver on our own?
Through the chair, so the, the funding percentages are on page 87 of your budget or of your agenda. So the deficit on this budget is shared based on that total population. So that calculation is shown on page 87.
And then follow up if I may, does that now correctly where I might be mistaken, but is the town not the primary user of that? Kind of how does it go in order of town, village, county for, for use and need of this service and are we giving it out appropriately at that point?
Through the chair, so the agreement is based on population and if you look at the statistics that are reported on a monthly basis in my report to committee of the whole, depends on how you interpret those. Because we report the number of kilometers, we report the number of trips. We report all of the things. And so I guess it depends on how you interpret those numbers on who's using it more than, and, and that would have to be a discussion between the various councils if they wanted to renegotiate a different agreement.
Okay, thank you. And I, I really like seeing in the survey as well of, this is one of those services that we provide that is highly revered and very much appreciated. Yeah, absolutely. All right, so if we don't have anything further on community transportation. The economic development is next, page 30 of the draft budget, page 88 of our package. Anybody have anything here? Okay, pretty quiet bunch. All right, well, if I can start then on page 89, page 31 of the draft budget. I noticed Alberta hub jumped to 7,000. Is that just an increase in their membership requirement? Yes, it is. Okay, that's, that's quite an increase for sure. The shop local campaign. Is the, is, is the town and village also part of this particular shop local or is that for our egg producers? What? I guess I just was curious to get a bit more information on.
Any of these programs would be, you know, strictly county based.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So when we're looking, for example, then the website address, the economic development website, technical support. And that's, I'm assuming the Athabasca Regional Tourism website. Does the town and village contribute to that at all?
They do not.
Okay, because we're also advertising for the whole region.
Sorry, they do contribute a percentage to that tourism side of things. They agreed to continue there.
Oh, fantastic. Okay, that's awesome. And if anybody hasn't had a chance to look at that, the Athabasca Regional Tourism website is excellent. Really informative. So that's a little plug. Anything for anybody else that they'd like to bring forward? Sorry. Okay, thank you. Page 90 for moving, ready to move on. We are at the emergency management and highway 63 emergency services. Is there any conversation here? Other than we noticed that our provincial ground just dropped. Go ahead, please, counselor Anderson.
I'm just to confirm, this is emergency management, like in case of wildfire, not our, it does not include anything for our fire departments. This is just our wildfire mitigation and I guess flooding response, that kind of stuff.
Okay. Anybody else want to have any input here? Go ahead, please, Phil Chamsa.
Can I just get some clarity with the red lines, please? Those were just highlights that Chief Shalapay had in there for the finance team.
Okay. Flying right through. That's moving on to enforcement services, which is on page 93 of your package, page 35 of the draft budget. Any concerns? No concerns, we're going to move on. All right, facilities. Page 38 of the draft, 96 of your package. Is there any comment on this particular item? I will say that I'm glad that there's concentration on this. We definitely need to get to that preventative maintenance goal rather than catch up. So I appreciate seeing it. Anyone else? Okay, moving on, we're gonna fly through this. Family and community support services, page 40 of your draft, 98 of our package. As we all know, FCSS is does an excellent job and is well appreciated and glad to be able to support them. If we have no conversation here, we will move. All right, page 102 of your package, page 44 of the draft budget, fire protection services. I have a question. Telephone and cell phone page or on page 44, 2217. Is that just? I noticed it dropped. Is there? Which is a good thing. I'm just curious why.
Um, we've been flushing out like there was two different kinds of radios, you know, we had the Afrax and they had the traditional radios, so we've been flushing that out and so that potentially lowered some costs along the way. Thank you.
Appreciate it. And as I mentioned at the beginning, when we have that 1.8 in general reserves and again, it will come in conversation, but it's just something to think about here being that in our the budget change request form, it was mentioned for sure where what we're looking at. With regards to replacing old units that are now probably past their life. That we consider putting some of that there. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Page 45 of the budget, one of three of your agenda. We have many districts on Parkland dispatch for 1850 and one still on Kai Tech for 6,300. When can we get them switched over and save $4,800?
The only district that we have remaining on Kai Tech is Baptiste Lake and so that's a work in progress.
Go ahead, please, council hall.
Is that not a bill that the fire club should be paying? Why is the county paying that on behalf of a department that is not a county department?
Madam Chair, I think all those items are under discussion. So I think we're organizing a follow-up meeting with that fire department. So we hope it happens in the next few weeks.
So if we were to turn it to zero, would that be helpful? Because like why, why are we, why is it still on our budget?
Madam Chair, I think we have some runway left on that before we have to make that decision. And let's continue the discussion with that department there. They're on a good track. They're good people. They serve the people well, just the whether it's them or us or the others, the days of the handshake agreements are probably passed and this is, this is another remnant of the handshake agreements and and we'll get there. They're a good group of people.
And I, and I, I get that the individuals are great. I just would also point out this single payment is more than many of the summer villages contributing total to fire services.
Thank you. I'd like to chime in there and just say that the administration is dealing with this. There's no use bringing it forward in a negative manner to, to cause issues with administrations dealing. So let's let administration deal with this and then, then we'll find out as we move on.
Counselor Cuomo.
I don't think it's being brought up negatively and I think it's a very valid question, though. Why are we paying an extra 4450 for one department's dispatching? As opposed to, I would pay for two and a half other departments that are our own. So I think it is a very valid question when we're looking at our budget respectfully.
It's a draft budget and as it has been mentioned, this is in under discussion and will continue to be under discussion. So there we do as I'll use those words, we have a lot of runway left before we make any final decisions here. So I look forward to, to hearing back.
Okay, and then my next question, if I may?
If you may.
Thank you. Why are we running landlines to fire halls on page number 46, 104 of your agenda? The beautifully highlighted lines right at the top.
Please use your microphone so we can all hear what's the conversation is, please.
I believe the, the comment was maybe because there's no cell coverage in there, but again, if it's not a manned station, why are we paying that money per year?
Well, if I may chime in, I know we have an extreme issue with cell, cell service in our community and I would hope that with landlines, it is definitely a little more reliable. And I would hope that we eventually look as well at our capital aspect of getting better cell service in our community.
Some, sometimes you need a landline to run a security system as well.
Which, Madam Chair, those lines follow it right after the landline item. It says alarm. So I suspect it has to do with the alarm. So I suspect it has to do with the alarm.
And if we can go ahead, Counsel Anderson, please.
On page 103 of the agenda, a line item 1930, it says transfer from reserves, highway 831 wildfire. For $1.3 million. And I'm just wondering why that's on the Fire Protection Services budget and not on the. Emergency Management. Budget. And I know it's from 2025, but. We're tracking the expenses for emergency management there.
Madam Chair, that's a fair question, whether, you know, that's a, it's um. Whether it shows up in this one or shows up in another one, really, I don't think we're too worried about that. That's what. Chief chose to put it in, in this section. And it's either this one or that one. And that's a fair question. It could show up at either one.
Thank you. The thoroughness of the budget for fire protection is amazing. There is a lot to look at, a lot to people, for people to understand and realize what's going on when it comes, it's not just a couple of trucks. Go ahead, please, Counsel.
Well, just to follow up. I'm hoping there will be some disaster, disaster recovery funding coming back to the county from that. So as long as they're both reported on the same. Area. It kind of tracks. If not, it might skew things where people think that we suddenly have money coming in. That they don't realize that we put out a lot more first, just for longer term tracking.
Absolutely. Alrighty. As everyone is still having a quick look at it, I just really appreciate on page 108, the budget change request form. And it discussing our fire smart coordinator. I think that's a great addition and I'm so happy to see that grant funding has been utilized. To obtain that position. And that I hope that one day that more and more municipalities will get together and really consider how important fire smart. Properties are to their municipality and that we may band together and lobby the Insurance Bureau of Canada to provide some of those discounts back to insurance. People who are paying high, high premiums in insurance that if they're fire smarting their properties, that this is, should be a discount for them. So. Just something, another plug out there for, for how awesome fire smart is. Go ahead, please, Counsel Chamsik.
I totally agree with that, but just out of curiosity, in page 47 and that very eyesight list there. As I look at my pen is correct, Rapid 52 maintenance is missed for the proposed. Budget nearing the bottom third of your page there.
Rapid 52 maintenance?
Yes.
There's nothing there for $500 compared to the rest. Is that what you mean? Is Rapid 52 going to be sold? No, maybe not, because it's in 27.
We'll, we'll have a look at that.
Okay, very good. Awesome. Anyone else? And again, I appreciate and please let Chief Chalope know, I really appreciate the budget change request forms and the detail that has gone into these to be able to explain. Where we're at. In the life span of our, our equipment. So if we're ready to move on to page 112, the GIS services draft budget. Page 54 and 55 of your draft, anybody? Nobody. All right, we're going to move next to the Human Resources and Safety Draft Budget, page 56, page 114 of your.
Just what are we doing that, what projects are underway in that, that we're transferring from reserves? Like what's the? Do GIS?
Aerial imagery.
Through. Through the chair, yes, it's the aerials imagery and we will be. Doing it on an annual basis and put it away and then purchase every four years.
But this money coming in from reserves and we're not doing new photos till, oh.
Those one, yeah, transferred in 27.
Yeah, so. That's okay. That's right. I, I had looked at the wrong vertical line.
Thought we'd average it out per year.
And that, that gives us like 2025, then we'll see new imagery 2026, which is so great because we've been looking at what 2019 for so long. And then we finally got to 2024. Everybody's like, awesome. So yeah, I really appreciate that. Okay, we're ready to move on. Human Resources and Safety. Draft Budget, page 56, 114 of our package. Any concerns, questions here? Okay. That was fast. And we move on to the dreaded legislative budget. Page 58 of the draft budget, page 116 of our. Agenda package. Any conversation here? Please go ahead.
I guess regarding the salary and hourly wages and that. Is the cola put into, into councils? Council's numeration. Thank you.
Yes, please, go ahead.
I'm sorry, going back to page, I guess 56 of the budget, page 114 of the agenda package. For Human Resources and Safety, the salaried and hourly wages is 233, $227,000. And yet the sum of expenditures on the 88,000, I think they, the spreadsheet might be missing a line there to add in.
Very good.
If we only have 15,000 coming in, we're spending a lot more than 88,000.
Good catch. Yep, good catch. Okay. Back to legislative. Um, just one question, and we appreciate the information that was, had come forward so far, but looking to hear. Being that we're coming to the end of the term and part of the policy does mention conferences. If we're over in our conferences, that needs to be paid back. So just curious if you've had an opportunity to look into that at all. Or we'll be looking into that before the end of our term.
I got an email that had everybody's.
It didn't include conference.
The training, Madam Chair, sorry, the training. So training would be where conferences would be charged to. And then there was travel and subsistence, which would be your. Mollage and your hotels.
Well, they seemed pretty low considering what was on.
But that being said, there was a couple of numbers that, for some reason, the system was picking up a couple of small numbers. So it would change probably by like 25, $30, but no. So training, so if you go into like RMA, for example, that would fall under training. And then any travel, like mullage to a conference or hotels. Is the travel and subsistence.
Okay, all in one code. Okay, thank you. Um, it was also mentioned, there was concern some from some of the public with regards to lunches being provided for. Council, so that would be a conversation to be had, I think, was as well that they felt that, that counselor should bring their own lunch. And so I just wanted to bring that, put that on the table as some, some residents are not happy about lunches being provided for council. And if we're ready to go ahead, Library Board, page 61 of your draft, 119 of the package. Any concerns or comments here? Libraries are good to go. All right, Planning and Development, page 63 of the draft, 121 of the package.
On the libraries, do we have a plan for the Rochester Library? Like what's, what's happening with the, the location of that facility?
I didn't hear the first part.
The Rochester Library, the plan.
So it, it needs to be incorporated in this budget because it would seem like this is a cycle that.
I think as we get asked the question, then it'll come to council and we may have to adjust the budget. At this time. I don't believe that we've been served notice by anybody. So.
Appreciate that.
Don't make a decision before you have to, I guess.
Thank you. Great, Planning and Development, again, page 63 of the draft, 121 of the package. Um, I just have one question then, on page 64, code 2211, travel and subsistence provides use of own vehicle. For inspections and meal allowance. Is it county SUV not available on a regular for that?
Madam Chair, it's not always available. So sometimes, depending on the day, individuals may use their own personal vehicles.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Quick question on that then. There, I'm assuming that there are no county trucks available for them to take from the public works yard. And do we know that these vehicles have the proper insurance for work usage and not while we're there using it for county business?
Are you referring to the 2 million liability?
Correct. Because if admin is using their own vehicle, they should have the proper insurance to go with that.
We will make sure.
Thank you. Anything further? All right, Recreation Services, page 66 of the draft, 124 of the package. Who would like to begin? Well, I just will comment to say how much I appreciate seeing a recreation plan. I realized the one was done in 2016, 2017, but. As you mentioned, it's out of date, so that would be great to see. This, go ahead, please, Counsel Anderson.
Seems like there was a lot of boat launch maintenance required in 2025. And I know admin has previously talked about how they have plans. To continue doing maintenance on an annual basis. And I'm just wondering if the $60,000 accurately reflects the maintenance of. All of our county boat launches. Just there are so many of them.
To the chair. I guess that number is the one that. I guess they were, we were comfortable with as far as small maintenance goes. It doesn't include any upgrades. So our boat launches are what they are. They're, they're aged. They're not the nice, modern. Big wide ones. So this money obviously does not reflect new ones. It would be maintaining what exists today.
Thank you. Go ahead, please, Counsel Hall.
Uh, two things. One, I refer you back to page 24 of your agenda where it identifies the priority that residents place on campgrounds and boat launches. On the graph there, that might be worthwhile. And then the other question, when I look at line on page 126. Line 2755, it talks about multiplex capital. I agree that we need to have long-term capital plans. You've heard me say that for four years. I'm, I think we need to have greater discussions around the, the. Changes in multiplex capital and we need to be, have a lot more predictability and stability in what that number looks like. I, I'm not a supporter of it jumping all around. To me, the whole idea of doing those long-term plans is to figure out a, a. A more or less flat rate number that you can budget into perpetuity so that in some years, they will spend a little more than that and some years a little less. And they'll bank it for the next, you know, that it will bank a crew or deplete their reserves if that, as that goes. So I'm not okay with that change. And I think we've got to have a bigger.
Madam Chair, I wanted to point out those numbers on lines, well, 2755 for multiplex operating in capital. We're actually based on last year's budget and I didn't get the email from the multiplex manager about the new budget. So you're absolutely right. So there's a new. Capital budget that's, I went, I believe it went from 450 to 500,000 in this, this year. And that's not reflected in these numbers.
No, I, in my mind, I was thinking about the numbers that I knew that we'd seen in even. So the comments that.
All right, go ahead, please, Counsel Anderson.
I agree with that comment. I, I know we've talked at the multiplex board level. About the asset management plan and how much. The building is expected to require in maintenance and upgrades in the next 10 to 20 years. And how best to prepare our partners. At the council tables for a predictable funding model. So if that's something that council would like to see, go back there and say, okay. Split it up for 10 years that we have a predictable number for the next 10 years. I do think that that would make municipal budgeting much easier. If we wanted to do it that way, because the costs are so high. For the maintenance of that building as it ages, so. I, from the council standpoint, I would like to see that as a more predictable funding arrangement there.
Thank you. Go ahead, please, Counsel Hall.
So there's a request for over two years, $300,000 to do another state of recreation report. And I'm wondering if that's the best spend, given that. I'm. I, I'd like to see how that aligns more clearly with council's objectives. And given that the last one was done and nothing happened with it, you know, is it? Do we need to start at zero or can we build on what was there? But until I, we know for sure that council says, you know, developing this recreation pieces is. The top 10 priorities for the council. I'm not okay with dropping 300,000 bucks on a report that we're gonna, that may not be our priority. And that ends up in exactly the same condition as the 2016 one.
I'm sure we've had a lot of internal discussion about that and we're not sure that. That's what council wants either is another state of recreation report. So we scaled it back to get ramped up for the first year. And we'll work with council to figure out what exactly are we trying to achieve. And if we need to just do some targeted things, like. Can you, can we have a consult provide us a capital plan for all the campgrounds? Okay, let's just, let's jump ahead instead of. Waiting and doing a whole bunch of things. So it's, it's more of a placeholder right now. And so we wrote it down as if we're. Doing the state of the recreation, but we, it would come back to council to define, what are we trying to do? And we scaled it back. At, at one point, we had all 300,000 in one year. We said, no, let's start with 100,000. And find out from council what their priorities are. Maybe council wanted a boat launch design for every facility. Fine, whatever. If council just wanted to jump ahead and start doing some things, that's fine, but we put a placeholder there. So your point is well heard.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Crazy how much outhouses are saying, just putting it out there, understood what needs to happen and regulations and all of those things. It's just. Wow. But that's part of our recreation. All right, road construction and maintenance, page 70 of the draft, 128 of the package. Where are we at? Who wants to start? Pretty quiet bunch.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
I don't blame you. I think you, go ahead, please.
I guess my, my one and only question here is gravel program. Okay, when are we gonna see one? Like, 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 uh. A program for the next three, next 10, next.
Gravel strategy?
Strategy.
Oh. It's budgeted.
Yeah, it's budgeted. Sorry, through the chair. The strategy is budgeted. So that's one of the things that we want to look at is we, we want to identify where there are potential sources. How we would start acquiring those resources. And the goal is to move towards. You know, a, a 10, 20, 30-year supply of aggregate that we don't run into the same scenario. We ran into this year where, you know, our reserves were depleted to the point where we had to shut down our gravel hall. So that long-range planning would include, you know, that. Aquarium gravel supply as well as. Having crushed product available. One of the things that will be coming to council very quickly that we're currently working on is a tender. That is being put together for a three-year supply of aggregate. To. To both for them to provide the aggregate and haul and place it to our stockpiles. And that'll get us through hopefully this term where we can. And that'll get us through hopefully this term where we can get some additional gravel in-house. So you should be seeing that in the next meeting or two.
Under that strategy, or, and before the strategy, are we looking at doing any crushing?
Yeah, so that'll be the second one that'll be coming. So right now, we only have really one pit, two pits that we can crush in. So we have the Renault and Long Lake are really the only two pits that we have aggregate that can be produced. Now, what, with that, we're, our intention in the budget, you'll see an increase there on the, the cost of our aggregate, and that's associated with a move towards a coarser spec gravel to eliminate some additional fines out of it. Our feeling is that that will give us a more desirable gravel surface when it, during wet periods, more of an all-weather surface than some of the really sandy areas that we see today, so that's included in this budget, as well as some additional road gravel to try and catch up, our feeling is that we're behind in getting road on, or gravel on the roadways, and we need to catch up a bit, so we need to put a little more product on the road.
Awesome, appreciate that, that's fantastic, is there anybody else who would like to comment? Go ahead, please, Councilor Hall.
So you know, you remember when you were a child and you listened to the record, it kept skipping back to that same old line in the song, because I, I'm looking back at what our residents are telling us about the most important things to them, so the majority, like, you know, more than half of our residents, eighty-three percent, don't feel they're getting good value for what they pay. They're telling us very, very clearly that roads and bridges are the most important thing that we need to look after. About as many people and probably statistically identically, like, equal, are as happy with grading as it are unhappy with grading. And so I'm looking at this, and I'm looking at how it compares to last year, and I feel like, you know, we, we've got this very clear message, and I think we've known it, that the roads and the gravel and the bridges are important, and yet we're we're investing money everywhere but increasing these budget lines. Is it possible for us to, as a council, to take a step back and say, well, if this is the most important stuff, can we find a way to do better at that stuff that's the most important for our residents, and, and maybe pick a few other things to defer into the future while we get this put together and get this solved, so that people actually feel like they're getting good value and are satisfied. And some of it may just be communications, but I feel like we probably, this is, this is the one section of budget where I was hoping to see us increasing spending. And it's, it's fairly, you know, similar to year-over-year, and I just wonder if we can do better here, given that, you know, our, our single biggest asset in terms of value is going to be roads and bridges in terms of its cost. I, I agree with lots of the other stuff we're talking about, but I just wonder, can we defer, while we fix this for, for?
Through the chair, I, you know, I think the administration has seen the survey results the same as everybody else, and, you know, that's why we've we've tried to present a balanced budget. You, you know, we, we have lots of ideas and areas that we felt, you know, we would like to see improvements as well. We have put in almost a six hundred thousand dollar increase in the gravel, because we felt that that was maybe an area where we can get the best bang for our buck. Give the greater operators a fighting chance in maintaining the roadway with having some aggregate on the road to work with, very difficult to maintain roads that don't have gravel on them. So that, that's one area we had focused. You know, improve the gravel spec as well as, you know, we're, we're putting down what gravel's required, not just two hundred and twenty-five yards per mile, we're putting down what is required. So the current budget reflects that. We'd also had some other things that we'd put into the budget that we've had to remove in a effort to try and balance, present a balanced budget to you. Obviously, these were our thoughts, but we're definitely open to anything council would like to provide back for feedback.
Madam Chair, I'd like to build on what Director Morton said, I mean, there's one thing that we're doing right now that's not in the budget, because we don't need, there's no budget impact, is we've got one position that's vacant, and we've just retitled it gravel foreman, or greater foreman. Great, greater foreman. So what we, what we noticed was, it's one of our most important services, and we don't have a supervisor dedicated to only that service, so we're proposing to fill that position with, that's their only job, is to look at roads. And, and monitor the gravel program and that sort of thing, so it's new for us, but it's not new in other places, there needs to be someone always looking at the roads. Right now, it's done on a complete basis, it's reactive, and so we need someone, it's their full-time job just looking at roads, and so there's no, it doesn't show up in here, because there's no budget impact. It's an existing position, we're just, you'll notice that the ad's gonna go up pretty soon, so it's just an existing position, so that, that isn't reflected, maybe, maybe in the future, we can bring back an item on all the things that we're noticing that could lead to some better roads. But there is a bit of a plan, one of them is increasing the amount of gravel, and the other one is increasing the amount of attention that we're paying to the roads, but it's even summer deployment versus winter deployment, we've got ideas about all these things.
That's fantastic. This is really good, and that's what people are wanting to hear, and, and as you mentioned, half our residents, it's half the respondents, so, you know, we're looking at thirty-five people, although when we talk to people, we know what that conversation is, so.
Random sampling is reflective of the greater population, so it's not thirty-five people, it's reflective of what you'd expect in the, you know, nineteen times out of twelve.
And then again, too, when you talk to a lot of people who don't respond to these things, it's because they're fully satisfied, so I would say there's a lot of satisfied people out there as well in, in that situation. Go ahead, please, Councilor Anderson.
Thank you. I think for the last four years, we've been talking about the state of our bridges, and the bridge maintenance and bridge repairs and replacements, and how expensive it can all be. And I was just looking back to the twenty twenty-five budget, and we budgeted three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for our bridge repair program, and in this proposed budget, we're looking at nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The budget for bridge repairs plus another one point nine five million for bridge replacement, plus the alpact bridge, which I think is a significant step forward in the right direction for helping us maintain and replace and try to tackle that issue, so while we may not be paving a bunch of roads, I think that this, this is a really imperative issue, it's something we've talked to a lot of people about, and that is a step in the right direction.
Absolutely, I agree.
So thank you very much.
Absolutely. If anybody else, I guess, I'll just touch on the driveway snow plowing revenue being eighteen thousand. I know that that probably, will that conversation be coming back relatively soon? To have that conversation once again, I, I know we discussed the two hundred flat fee, and we were, we put it through, and we thought, okay, let's see how it goes, and, and wait for that feedback to come back before we have that conversation again. I know for the feedback that I've received is it's not well-received at all, and there's a lot of concern with regards to going back to not flags necessarily, but going back to per grade. Every time when they come in to do snow plow, it's a cost per snow plow, you just be quiet over here. And this is one of those things, right, but again, we used to have where seniors were free to have that service, and it was something that was well appreciated to have, so I know that that conversation may come back, and maybe he'll be absent that day. Yeah. There's that conversation, right? Um, and in addition, the, I noticed on page seventy-four of the draft, under beaver control, material supplies and county equipment, is that something that should be under agricultural services, being there's pest control there, or does it?
It's more associated with right of ways.
Okay, right of ways, okay, gotcha, thank you. And of course, hard surfacing. We gotta have that conversation, so hard surfacing, I see, we're, we're going to look at cleaning up what we've got, and making sure that what we currently have is brought up to standard, and, and will be, everybody will be happy that we're maintaining what we do have before we go on to new projects, if I'm correct, and will that start in twenty twenty-seven?
Yeah, so we're currently working on a long-range plan to ensure that we protect the investment we've already put into our surface road network, and ensure that council and administration understand, you know, what level of funding is required for the next twenty-five years, right, like, I mean, once we've paved them, you know, we can't walk away. We need to ensure that we put money away every year to maintain those surfaced roadways. Or until council decides we're gonna revert them to gravel. But this plan that we're currently work on, we felt was the first step in our surfaced road evaluation, and to ensure that we're protecting what we have, and that it's being maintained to a high-quality standard, and then we will look at bringing back the policy associated with additional surfacing, or new surfacing for council to provide their direction on that, if, if we can afford to do.
Okay. Thank you, all right, perfect. I think everybody, if we beat that one up, you want to carry on, please, go ahead.
Just going back into that hard surfacing overlay annual program, and that we'll have a, will council have a, a list of what roads we're looking at? Maintaining?
Absolutely, so what we'll be providing to council originally will be a ten-year plan that identifies the hundred and forty-ish kilometers of surface road that we currently have. And then one of the things, you know, just for easy calculations, if you take the hundred and forty and say it's they last seventeen years, then, you know, you need to do eight point three kilometers a year, while our current budget doesn't meet that, right? So again, you know, we still have some shortfalls, even in our maintaining our current infrastructure before we add any additional. And when we add additional, you know, you have crack ceiling, you have additional kilometers now, you, so anyway, you'll get a ten-year plan that identifies all of the roads, and they'll have, be listed in priority. That doesn't mean those priorities won't change based on an evolving condition, but that's what you'll receive.
Fantastic.
It's, just to be clear, it's being worked on right now, so it's not future, it's, it's being done.
This is great, this is fantastic, you know, it's been those conversations that we've been having, and we appreciate what you're bringing forward, you've been hearing, you've been listening, and you're understanding what, what needs to happen, and of course, your expertise on the table going, why isn't it there, so thank you very much for all you're doing to, to get us to where we need to be, appreciate it. Anybody else? Go ahead, please, Councilor Anderson.
Thank you. I think especially right now, when we're out campaigning and talking to more people, we hear from a lot of residents who would like to see their subdivision paved, or chip sealed, or something that may change the maintenance schedule on it, and I'm just wondering if administration has looked at the cost benefit of doing some of that, or if it's just so far out of budget at this point that we need to tackle some maintenance first, and get a good maintenance plan before we can even consider some of that.
I think we've done both, to be honest. Sorry, through the chair. You know, administration does, has looked at, and for a number of years, you know, we've always assessed you know, the cost benefits of gravel versus asphalt, you know, and if asphalt, gravel costs you thirty-nine hundred dollars a kilometer to maintain, and asphalt is seventy-nine to eight thousand, you know, something in between, being whether it's a soil stabilization, and chip seal probably falls right in the middle, right, around forty-nine to five thousand a kilometer, so those, those are numbers everybody's aware of. I'm, I'm gonna say that it, you know, it doesn't really fall down to, it comes back to, you know, what, what's council's vision for the community, and the quality of life, and all of those types of things probably has more ownership. There's no doubt that gravel road surfaces are the easiest ones, cheapest, sorry, I'm not gonna say easiest, they're the cheapest road surface to maintain. But there's more to a community than just that. So typically, it boils down to council's vision, and what you would envision for your community of how those decisions would play out, not a financial one. They're not in this budget because of a financial one.
Awesome, thank you very much. Go ahead, please, Deputy Reed Minz.
Yeah, just to, just to piggyback on the director's thoughts there. We have moved forward into the soil stabilization pilot project, where we've, where we put it into a couple of locations that are really going to tell us whether this stuff works, and possibly how long it lasts. That soil stabilization, the more and more I think of it, put into a lighter vehicle area as a subdivision, may last longer than on a heavily-traveled roadway, and, 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 so, so we, we have started a process of, of looking, looking through that, which I commend administration of doing. Bring on a pilot project, let's look at, let's see how long it lasts, we'll move on from there. Thank you.
Yeah, when we bring back the policy, and I believe, I, I think it'll be coming fairly soon, probably in the next six months or so before that we review it. There's lots of options that you're gonna want to look at, right, like, especially for subdivisions. You know, some, some municipalities, you know, do it under a local improvement only, where the repair pays for it, or a cost-share local improvement. So there's lots of options for council to evaluate, and I'm sure all those discussions will take place during the policy review.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? I see we're starting to dwindle in bodies here, so we'll keep going here. The waste management, page seventy-five of the draft, one thirty-four of the package. Is there any conversation that needs to happen here in this very most important priority record item that we need to deal with, as we cannot get away from that?
So one of the things I think council should be doing, especially as it relates to, you know, most of our waste management is handled by a third-party commission. We should be encouraging them to come back to us and talk to them about their long-range business plans, about their long-range plans to to generate revenue or, or not, and you know, encourage them to, to tell us about what they see the future is, so that it's not just just expect every year to send the county a bigger bill, and we'll just keep writing the check. We should, we should be encouraging them to think creatively about how they do business, and can they, can they tackle projects that actually suck, because some of their business lines are modestly profitable, and other ones are obviously not.
There's a commission in place that's able to drive that forward.
We, we can ask them to give it to us to see.
Waste, waste, waste management is, is there to provide a service and for, for the, for the area and all that, and, and it's a, it's a service that that also people pay for, it's, it's there's two conferences that they go on, and they, 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 as being part and parcel of waste management process. You know, in the committee, you can go to these conferences, and there's, there's many new, new ways they're looking at it, at decreasing costs of a lot of, in a lot of ways, so, so it's not like they're not looking into it, but, but there is a productive information gathering process of trying to figure out how to make things cost less. And as we see costs go up, so it costs everybody more money, right? So they are they are very productive on trying to eliminate costs as much as it can.
Thank you. So no further discussion on this item. All right, next one, wastewater services, 77 of your draft, 136 of the package. Again, another service that we just can't get away from. It is much needed. And as you mentioned already, Deputy Reedman's costs go up. It is what it is, right? We can do the best that we can to be as efficient as possible here, but well, can't tell people to eat less.
Just for reference, these costs quickly have gone down.
I'm sorry, I missed that?
What I look at this budget, it looks like the cost went up.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying.
You just said costs go up.
Costs do go up.
In this case.
This one, no, but I'm just saying as as time goes on, costs continue to rise, right? So we can't get away from that. Anybody else? Okay, next up will be the water supply, page 79 of your draft and 138 of the package. Conversation here. Go ahead, please.
We have sales and services. We have Collington Grassland, Wandering River. What is it? Small numbers there, but it's $6 a cube. It's a bit of a, it's not from town, right? Collington doesn't pay $6 a cube. Collington pays, what is it, 427 a cube? So and that's 427, whether they use five cubes or they use 15 cubes, they pay 427. So put that down here, $6 a cube to me is is not right.
Well, and the only way like we have had that conversation too, and hopefully it's it's on the action list to come back to have that, we're basically repealing the Collington levy through water rates. So to clean that up, to make it transparent, to make it so it doesn't have these different rates for for different communities. I think that's something that's really important to get done and bring it back to where it needs to be. But that's a conversation for another day, but I think that that's what will clean this particular item up for sure. Any other further on this one? All right, I think we're ready to go to capital. So we are on page 83 of the draft. Oh, I'm sorry.
Can we take a brief recess before capital?
Sure. I was just hammering it through because I was worried we were gonna lose more people. And if you leave the room, you might not come back. So we can take, would you like 10 minutes? Awesome. Thank you. 217, we'll return. Awesome. All right, we will reconvene and I believe we are on page 142 of our package, page 83 of the draft, capital projects. Where do we begin? I started at the beginning. Is there anything that administration would like to weigh in on here? Okay, so folks. Who would like to start? Go ahead, Councilor Anderson, then Councilor Hall.
Thank you. Back to the bridges conversation. It says we have stip funding for $1.462 million of bridge projects. Is that over two, three projects?
That's based off the work that we've identified, which is basically five projects. We're gonna be submitting stip applications for five bridges. So we've just identified 75% that we were gonna get it. If we don't get it, obviously, we'll have to drop the project, but we're hoping we'll get all five.
That's wonderful. And did we put any money in the budget for preliminary engineering for future stip applications?
So through the chair, one of the things that we've identified to our engineer consultant for bridges is that we always want to have at least one project sitting on the shelf shovel-ready so that if and when the minister happens to come at the end of the year and say, hey, we have some additional funds left in the budget. If anybody has a shovel-ready project, we will be one of the municipalities that are ready to move forward and apply for that funding.
That's awesome. Music, right?
That's awesome. That was my first other people's.
Fantastic. Thank you, Councilor Hall.
Couple of different questions. This ERP software, I feel like we've heard for years that we're, you know, getting new accounting software and Diamond was the one moving from Questica or so did we just transfer to a software that we're now gonna, but did we just transfer into Diamond and now we're gonna have to drop another 500 grand? And is that it's just such a tremendous amount of money? Is that really the best? And does that, what does it include? What's the annual licensing fee?
Manager, in regards to Councilor Hall's question. So Diamond is our financial software. We have several modules in Diamond. We have like payables, receivables. We have our utilities, like the basic modules. As you're aware, we do payroll through consultant Dayforce. And then we bought or the county bought Questica for budgeting strictly for budget purposes. You can do Diamond, you can do budgeting in Diamond, but it's your, you report through another software called Management Reporter. So we don't, we use Management Reporter a little bit at the county, but Questica was specifically for budgeting. So when we look at the new ERP system and Diamond itself is mostly like the Microsoft is mostly the financials. And then there's like two add-ons, like the utilities. And then like when you deal with taxes, that's like custom-built for municipalities. So when you're dealing with the financial software, and that's why I mentioned like the initial process of say four to six months. We have figured out exactly what we're gonna be looking for. Are we gonna keep, for example, we'll keep, do we wanna keep Questica for budgeting? Obviously, we probably stay with Dayforce for our payroll, but then we need to figure out what module is like, do we want like we have separate even for GIS, it's Catalyst is another separate unisite, you might know of this. So you mean, what do we want to include in this software? Do we want all-inclusive that you're gonna try and put every single thing in their project management, everything? Even go through like for WorkTech, we build all in one, or do you wanna just scale it down? So you do the basic, just like Diamond, like your financial core modules and then utilities and taxation. So no, you mean, we can keep, I mean, in my opinion, the best software is all in all in one, not have these separate softwares, because the separate software or programs, you mean, you gotta integrate it with your financial financial system, you mean, is a, and I'm saying this because I'm a finance person, but the financial system is the main system. I mean, you don't know, if you don't know what your finances are, you mean, you don't really know what operations, what's going on. So to me, if everything is integrated into, if you have your financial system that includes all modules, you mean, you're probably pissed off. Because integration, sometimes it could run well, you gotta maybe delay an integration, you're not getting on-the-spot information or whatever. But in terms of Diamond, this is Microsoft saying that it's end-of-life. You mean, they're they're basically they're basically saying that's it, we're not going on or supporting this program. So yeah, so we could run it right up till probably 29 might still operate, but there is no support. If something crashes or whatever, that's it, we're done. We had to figure it ourselves or do a custom build or something to get our numbers. In my in my case, study that's in this document, I did say I can't remember, but I think it was 60 to 75,000 probably yearly maintenance in terms of in addition to the upfront cost of the actual building the program, getting the software and whoever. So that's the upfront 500,000 capital, but then you're gonna have a yearly maintenance cost that you're paying to the provider. Yearly maintenance license fees, etc. You have to pay yearly. Not sure exactly what are what we pay Central Square this year, but I'm assuming it's around 60 or 70,000. So I'm not sure if that kind of answers a bit bit more what you're looking for.
And I would just add on on page 149 of our package, you have a great ERP business case here that explains so much what you're mentioning. And I really like the fact that on the financial slap, Sean, in a five-year example, there's an estimated efficiency savings of 120,000 per year. So you know, that's, go ahead.
So based on us replacing Diamond on page 65 of our agenda package, when we go back to the software maintenance costs, do we need to adjust that line item to now be the 60 to 80,000 per year instead of the 44 that we're expecting to paper Diamond this year?
Madam Chair, Councilor Anderson, correct. We don't know what the cost will be because that will be dependent on which ERP system we choose. I mean, that's probably averages 60, 75,000 yearly maintenance. So that number is kind of in put in there as a ballpark, even the cost of 500,000, we don't really know until we do an RFP. And when we got quoted by like we got quote could be anywhere from 250, 250,000 up to 2 million. So we put in as a number, at least to get this progress, I guess, started, 500,000. Probably like a program that will do what we need. We don't need probably, we're not looking like a Cadillac Lexus model. We're looking at a program that can do do what the county needs to do to present our financials reporting, etc. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so it would be nice, like through no criticism of the admin, I mean, I've not really ever been particularly satisfied with the level of financial reporting. Like, it's really hard to see where we're at. Like, it doesn't feel like there's always adjustments or timing or so I'm hopeful we can get to a better a better state where we have a, you know, a good sense of where we at on a more timely basis. The other questions that I've had in here, this highway signage is in at $80,000. The other questions that I've had in here, this highway signage is in at $80,000, 40 in this year and 40 in the other. Can we talk a little bit about what that is?
Madam Chair, the Councilor Hall, that identifies the two remaining signs on the primary highways entering the municipality. The big welcome to Athabasca foam core signs is what that is referencing.
So when I travel and I know, you know, other people travel south once in a while, I think it's important to look at the, how the ones we've already got are standing up because they, they don't look like they're in terms of color fast and all of that, they're, I'm disappointed that they look as faded as they do and they're less than five years old. So before we start spending lots of money on new ones, what are we doing about, you know, the, the ones we've got aren't really that, to me, they're fading too fast for, for this kind of money, like this is the price of a small car.
And I'm sorry, was it the 40,000 is just for one?
Correct.
Oh, wow. And did you determine which one that would be? Because I know there's two that are desperate.
I like those metal ones, honestly. You look at Sturgeon, other places, they've gone to more durable materials.
I would just like to point out that the Wanda River Community Group got the same sign for less than $40,000. So we're not doing it right.
I think that one was 36,000 if I remember right.
And then there's install.
And there's installation included. But one thing that, that was one question that I had also was, was where this was picked out. And I understand going with the metal sign and everything, but make it look presentable if you're putting it on a, on a main, main artery highway coming in your highway too right now, oh, that we do at the north end coming in from Lawrence Lake as one of our standard, the, the, the main sign was taken down. It has just a standard metal sign. I don't like the look.
It looks way better than the County of Athabasca one from two name changes ago.
Well, the biggest thing is that it actually had some character to it. And if you look at the MD of Letcher's Lake River, you look at the MD of Opportunity, you look at, you look at any of these, these municipalities have beautiful highway sites. I think we can do better. I honestly do. And if it's them form core size, let's do it. But putting a, putting a just metal sign like that on a numbered highway, a, a, a single numbered highway coming into County Athabasca. I'm not impressed. I did not realize that happened until about two weeks ago or maybe a week ago. I was out. And I, I was coming back and I just, I was floored. I don't, what is this? I would really like to see the, at least the core science. If you want to go metal, let's go metal. But let's make it so it's got some character.
So my, my final question was just around the, the track skid steer and I might've missed the business case for that, but that seems like an extraordinary amount of money for.
So through the chair to Councilor Hall, it is a very large skid steer. So one of the things that we're looking for is a high flow hydraulic for mulching deck. And so it's basically almost the biggest skid steer you can get. So we're, put it in intentionally, so it'll meet some mulching needs as well as function as a skid steer. So it, you're right, it is a big number.
Thank you, Councilor Chamsik. I tend to agree with you, Councilor, the highway signs, especially on our main economic corridors need to be replaced and I'm looking forward to seeing them. I see it as an investment in our community, not over spending that whole.
Absolutely. The pride that we take really shows. It's the same with the mowing program, the grooming and the pride that we take in our community really reflects on our visitors and our residents alike. So I think it's also very important. Hang on, we've got over here, we've got Deputy Reedmans and then Councilor Anderson.
But see, we've got a plow truck down for, for, for this year. We'd put in for two plow trucks last year. And did we purchase them, plow truck combos?
Through the chair, yes, we did buy two last year.
Oh, we did?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, in 2025, right? Yeah, this year. So we, we budgeted, we'd have ordered them. We obviously don't have them yet, but they're being built.
So is this plow truck, this new one that we're looking at possibly purchasing? Is just a plow truck?
It, I believe it's the fifth wheel.
The attachment?
Thank you. May I ask a question? The Cape Sealing Pilot, how many miles? I know you probably have brought that and said what that was, but I don't remember. Do you know how many miles it is for the, the Cape Sealing Pilot that we've got here?
I, I'd love to say it was more than a mile, but it is not. It's one mile, the pilot. It's in numerous locations, which we basically paid mobilization for three locations. Those prices come down significantly if that work is done all in one location.
So there's three locations that this particular one pilot is covering.
Correct.
Okay, yeah.
And they total one mile.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Councilor Anderson?
Under fire, the fleet replacement cost varies so much year to year. I'm just wondering, is that for new apparatus? A new apparatus every second year or we have a further breakdown of which units are being replaced here? And are they all new units or are we also still in the market for the used units? Because I know we had previously bought a demo that we got a great deal on.
I wish Chief Shalapai was here because he would know this. Maybe we can get that answer for you because you're right. He found a gently used one for a solution for this year. And so yeah, he always tries to find the best value and he knows which units he's planning for, for next year and just don't have that. So we'll make sure we get you that, that information.
Thank you. Anybody else? Don't have, please, Councilor Hall?
So when I look at the page 143 and we talk about the prior years and the math doesn't all add up for me, I guess. We've got an enclosed trailer. We've got a total of 35,000. I, I think maybe he's had a carryover from last year that's not in the prior years. Peace. When I go down the list, you know, there's 55,000 for a side by side that I guess we bought. I don't remember. I don't remember us talking about a side by side, but and then you go down to recreation playgrounds, the total's 100, but the, the annuals spread three times 20. When I do it is still only 60,000, but maybe there's special math. Outhouses is the same thing. Outhouses it 160 times two plus 80 should be closer to 400, not 460. So I'm just wondering if there's something we're not seeing in the sheet or something's wrong or but if.
Through the chair, to Councilor Hall, it's the 2024 cost that's factoring it in. It's not showing because you just have to edit the prior years better so it's going to show, but to answer your question, it's just that there's a different years that's already been done.
So I guess as a budgeting tool, though, if we're looking, you know, kind of for five years and forward, does it not kind of make sense that these things would add up?
We could definitely bring it back for the next budget discussion and fix it.
Madam Chair, yes, they should add up. We'll make sure they add up.
I think you will, you will find more than one line, doesn't matter.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wants to go further discussion on the capital projects, capital plan? We have a, we have Chief Shalapai who's joined us. Does anybody have any quick questions for Chief Shalapai? Thank you for joining us. It's like magic. Any questions for Chief Shalapai?
It was about the units proposed for next year and and whether or not you had, this year you had got creative and found a unit from someone else. So what do you have planned for next year, for 26?
Absolutely. So in 2025, we ended up purchasing, purchasing two brush trucks. We had the refurbished unit that we got for about half price. Actually, it's got a video of it today coming off the lot in Rocky Mountain. Looks fantastic and it gives us a full 20 years lifespan on that. So they took the body off of a wreck chassis and put the body onto a new chassis. We paid for the chassis and the retrofit. We also made the down payment on the new engine fruition park, which is the lion's share of next year's capital. Because we have to pay the outstanding balance of the 945 on that. In the proposal here, we had included two other options, one or one was for a 2027 purchase. We need the down payment next year. And that would to be to replace the 1989 engine in Caslin. The other item we left in there is actually, it's kind of, it's placeholder in the budget right now. Up front, we initially applied or put in here $240,000 to look at a structural protection trailer or sprinkler trailer to have access within the county. The way 31 fire showed that that's a vital piece of equipment that ultimately is what protected the three homes that were directly exposed to the fire. We did bring in mutual aid, but by the time they arrived, the fire had already passed and it was only through the fact that we have some small sprinkler, sprinkler caches within the county that saved our butt there. So we're looking at potentially putting there and depending alternatively, and this is where the, the kind of the and or was, is the depending on the outcome of our Baptiste Lake Fire Club discussions, we may have to look at diverting that funds to another apparatus as both tenders in the Baptiste Lake Fire District are now at a service. To mechanical failures. I mean, it's not our problem right now, but depending on how our negotiations pan out, we may have to look at putting some funds towards equipment in that area. So on, on the face of it, we're looking for sprinkler protection trailer, but if, if we do an, an imposition, we may have to approach council and rewrote that funding elsewhere to, to meet our needs. So this year accepting delivery, hopefully making a down payment and then fall goes well sprinkler protection trailer.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Does anybody have any further questions for Chief Shalapai? I'll just mention, thank you as well for the work that has gone into this and all the identification and prioritizing of the needs and your reports in here are so beneficial. So I really appreciate all the work you've done. Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Well, folks, if I'm not mistaken, we have come to the end of our capital project conversation. There are, of course, at the end of your agenda, further information, whatnot for the budget change requests that are here. But if there's no further discussion, oh, please go ahead, Councilor Hall.
Well, I, I get that a lot of work has gone into the, the budget and we've seen a number of enhancements and I guess I'm just wondering, you know, in that process of analysis, what, you know, what, are there any proposals for things we should curtail or eliminate doing? You know, we, we've talked about adding, adding, adding and we grow. Sometimes it would be nice to see trade-offs. We'd like to add this thing, but we'd like to sacrifice something else. We can't. I think we need to have a, a careful thought about, you know, can we restrain some of it or can we redeploy, but instead of just increasing? And I know level of service discussion will come up with part of that and priority based budget.
Yeah, Madam Chair, we kind of did that ourselves. We sat around and cut a bunch of things that after the first draft and we, we wanted to bring in something that was almost a balanced budget and it, it is. There's still some big asks in here. But really the level of service increases are really talking about roads and then a whole bunch of things we should have been doing all along, more bridge maintenance, the overlays for existing asphalt. And then continuing on with our fire departments. We don't have any massive level of service increases for things outside of those. So yeah, we self-cut, I think, a lot. Sat around until we found something that we felt we felt comfortable bringing to this council. There's also a few things that aren't in this budget too. We're a little modest on the strat planning with the new council and all the extra things that a new council might want, but we don't think those are going to be big numbers, but they're not really there. So yeah, I don't know what else to tell you. There's some things in there that, there are decisions that have been made, for example, that the increase for multiplex funding is a big number. So that, that, that boosts our budget overall. So we had to find, we had to cut back on some other things that we thought we should do. An example was we thought we should start on the drainage maintenance next year to the tune of about $300,000. We said, no, we better ask council for the level of service before we budget the 300,000. So we had a few items like that were, that were in the hundreds of thousands of dollars that we had in the first budget. So we already have. So maybe we didn't show that to council, but we did. So.
Appreciate that. Councilor Deputy Reedmans, we'll never get that straight. And then Councilor Anderson.
I guess one that hasn't even been mentioned here, and it's a huge ticket item, is the new shop. That's I'm very pleased to see this, just due to the fact that administration and, and, and as long as council understands what, what, what our employees are working in over across the road is not it's a building that, that needs to be replaced and we're not going to put enough in reserves to you know, to handle that and and the time that it needs to be done. So I just want to thank you very much for bringing that forward. And with the, with the thought of the change in the plan of actually keeping the other two buildings and maybe just fixing them up. That's, that's very proactive, you know, proactive way of thinking because to knock down a perfectly, the, the, the infrastructures there or the structures there. And, and with a little bit of fix-ups, we can, should be able to maintain it. So thank you very much for that. I look forward to that, having more discussion there.
That's awesome. And for those who are wondering, that's on page 153 of your package where the budget change request discusses the public works yard facilities. And I agree. Thank you very much for bringing that forward, Councilor Anderson.
Thank you. We included under 2027, $150,000 for the boil fish pond, whether that's for upgrades, reclamation, whatever they may be. Do we need to include anything in this year's budget for any environmental assessments or consultant fees to get us to whatever point we're going to, whether it be a design for improvements or environmental assessments? Or even anything for a renewal of the lease? Like, do we, do we need to budget some funds? No matter which way we go in 2026?
Through the chair, the Councilor Hall, we do have, it, I guess, a miscellaneous engineering budget that can facilitate some small work associated with it. The report is coming back to council on our consultation. So you'll get to see that and the results that from the public, I guess it's not really a booth, open booth that people were encouraged to come share their perspectives at. That will be coming to you very soon. And I guess after that, we'll have a discussion on where council envisions us going with it. So yes, we can accommodate some very small things within the current budget, but any significant items may have to wait till 2027 or us ask for additional funding.
Thank you very much. So good. All right. Does anybody else have anything further they would like to have a conversation about before we end our budget for? end our budget, first budget draft conversation? Last chance. The next conversation will be taking place at a new term for, on November 13. So whoever's at the table, of course, hopefully had a chance to review this. So that's it's, it comes back. All right. So we have a recommendation, of course, that we reviewed the 26 to 2030 operating capital and the recommended changes for further deliberations in the November 13 special council meeting. Councilor Minz, would you like to put a motion through that we received this information? All right, that we received this council, Councilor, let's put it this way. Deputy Reevesman's, we're getting to the end of the day, my tongue is still working. Would like to recommend that council receive the 2026, 2030 operating and capital budgets as information. There we go. All those in favor? And opposed? Two, one, two, three, four, four and two. I think we, yeah, we've lost three. Yep, one and two. Thank you, folks. Thank you very much for all the work that you've put into this. It's huge. It takes up a lot of your time. We appreciate what you're doing and what your considerations are for the county. We will adjourn today's meeting at 2:45. Thanks, everybody.